The April 14, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach sheet form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Thank you, Brenda. Ms. Jacqui Bowles, Science Program Specialist, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening.
Well, here I am again to introduce a wonderful, absolutely marvelous group of young people. We just attended the State Science Fair and took many accolades, which I will be telling you about, and the students were absolutely the best group of students I've ever taken to the science fair. Many of these students, as the ones that will be doing our inspiration and pledge, I've known since middle school and have pictures of them as young sixth and seventh grade students, and now here they stand before you as seniors, ready to graduate and leave us for much, much greater endeavors. So with that, I would like to introduce Cassandra Mosley. She was selected at the State Science Fair to give adjacent speech, which is quite an honor. Only six students in the state are selected, and she's going to give us a portion of that speech, which is a creative writing of her own.
Okay, so like Ms. Bowles said, I decided to do something a little more creative than just a speech, so I wrote a poem, which I called "Rhyms and Ribosomes." When you hear the word "science," many things come to mind, not all of which you feel so inclined to study in school, like the topic of cells, or what Newton first thought when that apple first fell. We dwell on the structure of proteins and atoms, if atoms or Einstein won the prize from Nobel. But science is more than men in white coats, with goggles on their heads, aprons tied at their throats. Scientists can even be people like us, the regular kids in which the world trusts to create new ideas to help save our land, like how ribosomes make proteins that all cells demand. Our hands shape the clay of our futures untold. The paths of our kids reflect what we mold. When we're old, do we want to be full of remorse at the state of our lives and the planet, of course? The forces of gravity and magnets and such are no match for the power of one human touch. We taint every droplet, drop trash from our pockets, leave laptops and chargers plugged into our sockets. We cut blades of leaves with blades from our swords, from our laid-down waste in our haste for rewards. Our oil kills coils of tendrils and stems. The junk in the soil is a rash on the gems of our earth, like the rivers and birds and the trees, which are worth so much more than the turn of car keys. People don't know of the harm that they cause, or maybe they do, but obey by the laws of habits that we form over hundreds of years that can only be broken by you and your peers. It's up to us now to change for the better. Our poor earth can heal if only we let her. We must strive to solve problems of smog and pollution, and even for cancer, we can find a solution. We're on our ways now to help do our part. Our science fair projects were only the start. Best of luck during judging. I know you'll do great. You can help change the world, because we made it to state. Thank you.
That was as well-received at the State Science Fair as it was tonight. It was a wonderful break from some of the other long speeches, so we loved it. I would also like to now introduce Brandon Williams. Brandon, if you'll come forward. Brandon is also another one of those students that Ms. Ditten and I have known for a long, long time and seen him grow up into a wonderful young man, and he's here to lead the pledge for us, and he's also one of our seniors heading off into the world.
Can everybody please stand up? Before I start this pledge today, I just want to bring out a history. 150 years ago, Abraham Lincoln was shot on this day to preserve the nation that we call America today, and I would just like to thank him for everything that he did for us in making our country once whole again. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brandon, could you stay up here for a minute? I wanted to make an announcement and recognize Brandon. I'm with Marion County Gator Club. We, the other night, decided on giving scholarships to seven of our students going up to University of Florida, and Brandon is one of them. So congratulations. $2,000. That'll help you a little bit. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you two go ahead and step here. I'll bring everybody else in. I am very proud to introduce this wonderful group of middle school and high school students that participated at the State Science Fair and did quite well, I might add, in terms of their awards and accolades. Here, I'll let you hold this up. First, I would like to introduce to you our high school students that participated at the science fair. We have from Vanguard High School quite a few students. We're very proud of those, and Mr. Hare was their teacher there, so he was a great help in encouraging our students to do projects. Raina Chandra unfortunately could not be here today, but she was representing Vanguard High School. And then we have Alexandra Daly, so if you'll just step forward for just a moment. This is Alexandra, and she goes to Vanguard High School, and Alexandra won a fourth place in her category at state. We have Cassandra Mosley, who you heard from earlier today, and Cassandra's also from Vanguard High School, and she won second place in her team project with her brother Jacob Mosley, and they have been in science fair for a long time, sometimes doing their own projects, sometimes doing projects together as a team. We also have Harold Phillips. Harold, if you'll step forward, from Vanguard High School. And Harold won fourth place in his category, and this was his first time at state, but not his last, I'm sure. And we also have another wonderful student, Gabriella Sullivan. And Gabby, as we know her, is from Vanguard High School, and she achieved a second place at state. We were very proud of her. Also not here tonight is Kanal Lapadia, and he's also from Vanguard and won a second place. Now, Brandon was our representative from Bellevue High School, and Brandon won fourth place. He also won a scholarship for $14,000, which he will be using towards his graduate work at UCF in sports management. Is that right, sports management? Okay. So we're very proud. Brandon already knows where he's going to undergrad, go Gators, and he already knows where he's going after that, so you have a wonderful path ahead, Brandon. And we have our wonderful new scientist, our budding new scientist, that are coming up from middle school. Christopher Bradshaw, if you'll step forward. Christopher is from Osceola Middle, and he received a fourth place at state. We have Olivia Hayworth, and Olivia is also from Osceola, and she received an honorable mention at state, her very first time at state. And from North Marion Middle, we have Thelwell Lloyd. Thelwell received a second place at state, and this was his second year going to state, and we're very, very proud of you. Also from Osceola is Anna Mitchell, and Anna, in her first time, received a fourth place in her category, and she received a special award of $100 from the Baird Environmental Science Award. So we're proud of you, Anna. And from North Marion, we have Bhavani Sivakumar, and she is from North Marion Middle, and Bhavani, in her very first time at state, won fourth place. Also Gabby's brother Cameron represented Howard Middle at state, and we're very proud of him. He's been doing projects for quite a long time in our science fair, and I hope he'll continue. So this is our wonderful science fair group, and I could not be more proud of these students. They did tremendous. I think this was the best we've ever done. We had so many of our students placed, and the ones who didn't were in really rigorous categories, so there was lots of reasons why. So this is the high academic rigor that we're so proud of. And I have some certificates for the students. Go ahead and acknowledge them. And I... (applause) I also would like to acknowledge that some of our students are going to the International Science Fair, May 10, in Pittsburgh, and we will be taking Raina Chandra. Unfortunately, she's not here tonight. Brandon will be one of our international representatives, and then Cassandra and Jake with their team project. So we want to wish them the best of luck at International. We're going to have a great time in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, everybody. Like this direction. One more. Good. Thank you.
And before you leave, on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate each of you. You know, Cassandra, when I listened to your poem, I was like, wow, she is wonderful. Because when you think of a scientist, you know, you really think of guys with the white jackets on, and just to look at you all, it's so wonderful to see that you're excelling and to see the girls that are doing and competing and really, really making us proud. And boys, of course, you know we're proud of you, but thank you all. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It is good to see some girls up there. Very good. Congratulations. And Brandon, congratulations to you, future Gator, and we'll be seeing you at the Euro Center, where Coach McElwain is going to be May 4, and we'll be recognizing you and the other six scholarship recipients. Congratulations to all of you. Are any of y'all going to University of Florida? Okay, okay.
Some of them aren't ready to go yet. They're not ready to go yet, so they're sophomores.
I had to ask.
And we're thankful, Silver River, for giving us our wonderful T-shirts, which have all
the students' finalists' names, and we're really proud of that, and thank you, Scott, for that help with our T-shirts. We looked really special there. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles, too, for all the work you've done. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 14, 2015, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting. The audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Board, may I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Send it.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Zeeley and seconded by Mrs. Kelly. Any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for March 5, 2015, administrative briefing and work session, the March 10, 2015, school board meeting, the March 19, 2015, administrative briefing and work session. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes?
Need a motion?
You guys need a motion?
Send it.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Zeeley and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Daima Apshir, Supervisor of Alternative Programs, is here to recognize the 2013 to the 2014 model PBS as positive behavior support schools.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my honor to recognize several schools. The most PBS schools that we've recognized in any given year for this model school status have been three schools, and this year we have 10 schools who are receiving this recognition from their work last year. Unfortunately, the recognition is a little delayed in getting to us, so what we're recognizing is their efforts from the 1314 school year, and I won't go into great detail, because I do want to get them up here and give them their awards, but in a basic overview of what it takes to be a model school, as designated by the state Florida Positive Behavior Support Project, is great implementation of those 10 critical elements of positive behavior support, and what that entails is teaching school-wide expectations, acknowledging students for meeting those expectations, having fair and consistent discipline practices, consequences for students who don't meet the expectations, and these schools have definitely done a great job in their implementation efforts. So what I'd like to do is call them up and give them their certificate, and then we'll do a photo in small groups, so that they can get up here in the photo. So first off, we have Anthony Elementary School. If you all would come up. Ms. Houston and Mr. Johnson are here to receive their recognition. Thank you. This is our principal at Anthony. You can just stand right there. And dean of students. Next up is Bellevue Elementary School, and with us tonight, we have Ms. Connor, the principal, and Ms. Darnell, the dean. And next, we have Emerald Shores Elementary. Mr. Williams, the principal, is here. And Greenway Elementary, we have Ms. Clark, the principal, and Mr. Cook, the dean. And we'll stop for a quick photo, and we're just going to hold up one of the banners. The schools get this nice banner to hang at their school, so we'll stretch this out.
Can you guys pass that one more first? And let it go down some, so we can see your certificates. Perfect. One, two, three, one more. And good.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, we have Howard Middle School. Mr. Hensel is the principal there. And Lakewood High School, Mr. Mayor, the assistant principal of discipline.
Mr. Mayor.
And Savannah. I apologize.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. And Osceola Middle School, Ms. Anderson is the assistant principal of discipline, and she has with us Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Ennis, teachers at Osceola. They're integral part of the PBS team there. And we have Reddick Collier Elementary, Ms. Dickey, the principal, is here, as well as Ms. Hill, third-grade teacher. And we'll take a picture with you all.
Basically, come right here. One, two, three, one more. And one, two.
Congratulations. And next, we have Saddlewood Elementary, and with us this evening to receive the recognition is Ms. Cruz, the dean of students, Ms. Beck, principal, Ms. Brown, school counselor, and Ms. Rodriguez, one of our teachers. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, we have South Ocala Elementary School, and with us this evening is Ms. Coy, the principal. And we have Ms. Lamb, second-grade teacher, and Leanne, assistant principal. And we'll do another photo. Where's your certificate?
Photoshop it down. Even though the banner says Anthony Elementary School, Photoshop that.
Perfect.
Here we go. One, two, three, a couple more.
Thank you all for the opportunity to recognize these schools.
Thank you, Dr. Apshir. And I want to thank all the principals and deans and all involved in making sure that our students behave responsibly in our schools. Thank you so much.
Great leadership. Thank you.
Board, may I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing May 7, 2015, as the National Day of Prayer? May I have a motion?
Send it.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Kelly. Is there any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Production Coordinator, and Mr. Charles Fleming, Representative for the Marion County National Day of Prayer Task Force, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Board members, interestingly enough, this evening, Mr. Fleming handed me a document that outlines the history of the National Day of Prayer. Come on, gentlemen, you stand right up here, right beside me. I just want to read the first three points, since we already kind of got a history lesson from one of our students this evening. In 1775, the first national call to fasting and prayer was called for by the Continental Congress. Then in 1863, President Abraham Lincoln declared a National Day of Prayer and fasting, and in 1983, the National Day of Prayer Task Force was established, and the first National Day of Prayer was held in Constitution Hall. So I thought those were interesting. Let me read this proclamation on behalf of you and to our audience here in person and to those watching via television. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the Congress of the United States passed a law proclaiming the first Thursday of each May as the National Day of Prayer, whereas May 7, 2015, is the day set aside for Americans of all denominations to unite, to pray for our people, our leaders, and nation. Whereas the 64th consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer recognizes the freedom to gather, worship, and pray, and whereas this year we are united in our prayers once again for the safe return of our extended family members serving in our military overseas. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Marion County School Board acknowledges May 7, 2015 as the National Day of Prayer, and joins all citizens of Marion County, the state, and the nation in observing this important occasion." And of course, each of you has signed and dated it this evening, so on behalf of the superintendent and the board, Mr. Fleming, let me present this to you. You're welcome to offer some comments if you'd like. Come on, step up here, so we can hear you.
We receive this on behalf of the people of Marion County. Just want to thank the school board, all of you, and we certainly need more prayer in this country, and this is a special time of the year for a National Day of Prayer. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christian. Individuals who have completed their appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you plan to address the school board tonight, you need to be aware of the school board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Christian or from one of the two front tables. Under the school board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least 48 hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. Please note that audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. Use of any student's name, except by his or her parents or guardian, or any identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time considerations, the school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic. Shorten the presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Ms. Boynton.
Madam Secretary, would you please call our first speaker?
Mark Avery.
My name is Mark Avery. I reside at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472, here as first vice president of MEA, and I would like to share with the board and the people of Marion County a video from a colleague named Luke Flynn from Indian River. He is, again, we're just trying to continue this discussion about testing, and this is, again, a video that will share the teacher's side of this issue that sometimes is not seen from maybe even the board, because you guys aren't always in the classroom either.
Good evening. Good evening, Luke Flynn. Thanks for the extra time. I hope to make it worth your while. At the last board meeting, I urged you to stand with teachers and students, to call on legislators, our governor, and the Department of Education to pause all high-stakes consequences associated with this year's administration of the Florida Standards Assessment. I stand before you tonight to make the request once again. I have grave concerns about the ability of the DOE to accurately determine value-added model, VAM scores, for the FSA. My concern extends beyond just the philosophical realm. I'm going to share with you data from my evaluation for the 2013-2014 school year, which I hope will help you to understand my concern. First, though, let me give a quick refresher on how VAM is calculated. Each student is assigned a predicted score on the test. If they exceed their predicted score, then the teacher is credited with adding value. The extent to which students exceed their predicted score counts positively towards the teacher's evaluation. Conversely, if a student scores lower than the predicted score, the teacher did not add value, and these students count negatively towards the teacher's evaluation. Or at least, that's where the formula is supposed to work. Just yesterday, I was able to access my students' predicted scores for the spring 2014 administration of the Reading FCAT. I have four students whose predicted scores were literally impossible. For each of those four students, their predicted score was higher than the maximum number of points that could be earned. For example, one of my sixth-grade students had a predicted score of 286.34. However, the highest a sixth-grade student can earn is 283. The student did earn a 283, incidentally. Despite the fact she earned a perfect score, she counted negatively towards my evaluation because she was three points below her predicted score. In total, almost half of the students who counted towards my VAM, 50 of 102, fell short of their predicted score. That sounds bad. Really, really bad, but a closer look at the numbers is necessary to tell the complete story. Of the 50 students who did not meet their predicted score, 10% missed zero or one question. 18% missed two or fewer questions. 36% missed three or fewer questions. 58% missed four or fewer questions. Let me stop to explain the magnitude of missing four or fewer questions. Let me stop to explain the magnitude of missing four or fewer questions. Since the Reading FCAT contained 45 questions, a student who missed four or fewer would have answered over 90% of the questions correctly. What this means is that 58% of the students whose performance negatively affected my evaluation earned at least 90% of the possible points on FCAT. Where is the value in the value-added model? How does all of this data and the enormous amount of time spent testing add value to me as a teacher, to students, to parents, or to the community at large? It leads me to wonder, what more can I possibly do? When the state issues predictions for my students that are impossible for them to meet, when I suffer financially due to my students' test scores despite their high level of achievement, what more can I do? The conclusion I've come to is the only thing left for me to do is to tell my story, to tell it often enough and loud enough that the folk in Tallahassee begin to listen. And this brings me back to why I'm speaking to you this evening. I'm asking for you to help me tell my story. When you are asked questions about testing and evaluation, please tell my story. When you meet with legislators, please tell my story. When you are stopped by parents in the grocery store, please tell my story. At every opportunity you get, please inform anyone who will listen that the state has set an impossibly high bar for students and for teachers. And it is because this bar is impossibly high that no high stakes should be associated with this year's administration of the FSA. I implore you to stand with the students of Indian River County, to stand with every hard-working education professional in Indian River County, stand up to those in Tallahassee, and demand that no high-stakes decisions be made based on this year's administration of the FSA. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Mr. Superintendent, Chris Altobello, 2020, Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida, 34479. I want to first thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to show that video. Little background on Mr. Flynn, he's, of course, a middle-school language arts teacher, president of the Indian River Teachers Association. He's also running for the Florida Education Association Secretary/Treasurer position. He's a true advocate for public education, and as you can see, he doesn't mind to roll up his sleeves and really get knee-deep into this toxic testing issue that continues to plague our state. I'm here tonight, I want to first talk about that video that we just saw, and I want to just point out something, that we are predicting, our evaluations, at least on the VAM portion, are based on a predicted score. And I appreciated some of the response that I saw as you heard his dilemma, in that some of these predicted scores are unachievable. So it goes to our point, is that teachers, and dare I say, students, are continuing to be asked to do the impossible. And so I want to commend this board for taking a first step a couple of months ago in signing the resolution. And I am here, along with my fellow presidents across the state, who have committed to Luke to share his story, because we cannot write a better one. And I would ask you, I'm going to, as soon as I sit down, I'm going to click Send and send you the link to the website, which, incidentally, is called Vamboozled, for...
Very appropriate.
Very appropriate. And I would hope that you spread that like wildfire among your school board colleagues and other colleagues. I also want to spend just a few minutes talking about HB 7069, the student assessment bill, which was signed by the governor today. The FEI has delivered, hand-delivered a letter to the governor, and we, of course, have mixed emotions with this bill. We do think it's a good first step that is plaguing our state with the student assessments and teacher evaluations, but we do have concerns that are left undone in the bill. For example, the bill, we continue to have too many tests mandated, state-manded test, and not enough schools are set up with the proper resources, technology-wise, to meet computer-based testing. And hopefully, we're doing a good job with that, I think we are. But there are other counties that are suffering. Also, the lost instructional and classroom time continues to affect students and teachers. For example, media centers and computer labs are being turned into test central, because we just don't have enough of computers. And it disrupts the students from meaningful instruction. Testing is not teaching. Also, what concerns us as teachers is the failure to return useful information to parents and teachers in a timely manner. Teachers don't get these results back until they come back to school the following year, and we really don't know how they've done, because we can't take a look at these tests. We also have heard from various legislators about test validity in general. We have seen those legislators join educators and parents across the state, challenging the validity of the tests and accountability standards. Now finally, while HB 7069 does provide some relief, the evaluation process, we believe, has been slightly improved, not, for example, VAM will only count for 33% of a teacher's overall evaluation. We have seen the bill provide some relief in terms of reduction of some testing, and also allowing counties some progress monitoring flexibility with children we know don't really do well on standardized tests. So in that respect, the bill is a good first step. However, I would urge the board, I would urge parents, teachers, and stakeholders, that we must continue to make our voices heard. We must also tell Luke Flynn's story as a way to effect change. And if anybody in the public would like to see that, we are going to have it on our website, www.marionea.org. Now, I wanted to bring the manipulative today in honor of the FSA and Common Core and all that good stuff. It might be a little difficult to understand, just like Common Core and FSA is, but I want to leave this with you. It highlights three things: too many tests, lost classroom time, and overall test disruption that goes on in our schools with what's happening in the state. So, Mr. Superintendent, if you'd be so kind to pass those around, and I have more of them should you need it. Thank you, Madam Chair, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Chris, for that update. And thank you, Mr. Avery, for the reading. We appreciate that so much. And, Board members, yes, if you looked at your emails today, you will see John Mixon, an update on the fact that the governor also signed in the accountability bill, is what they call it. But I share the frustrations of Mr. Chris, because they did reduce the VAM from 50% to 33%, but, you know, we'll still be working. That's what I'm going to say, we'll still, there's a lot of work to do on behalf of our teachers. So, but make sure you read your emails, and you'll see some of the updates on it today. Madam Secretary, do we have any more speakers?
Yes, Ms. Carolyn Torrey.
Good evening, my name is Carolyn Torrey. I reside at 1202 Southeast 14th Avenue, Ocala, Florida. I'd like to, I really haven't met Mrs. King, and I wanted to congratulate her for joining the board, and I just was curious, is your mom the Honorable Ms. Frances King of the Judicial Court?
No.
No, you're not related to her? Oh, okay, thank you. I have been, a complaint that I filed with the, drafted to go to the Office of Civil Rights, was based upon the situation where my child was a white child with the appropriate scores and denied the gifted program. We went into the yearbook pictures, and we noted that there was a disproportionality of the minorities were underrepresented in the gifted program over Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary. We went back to the yearbook pictures, and we went back through to find. We then found the state, 2003, with findings against Marion County about the lack of testing for the gifted program for the minorities. We then went to the 2005-06 presentation to the Federal Department of Education for Dr. N.H. Jones, seeking to win the award of Blue Ribbon School, and then we went to 2011. In 2006, we had 28, 20, I believe it was 26% represented, and at 18% was submitted a number of years later. And under deposition, the principal indicated he was supposed to have 35%. This was very concerning about a school district that has been in trouble since 1978 with the Department of Justice about unequal access to the schools. I did notice that in, and I'd like to know who was in charge of all of that, and I believe that I've been attacked through the school system because I identified this as a whistleblower. And there are a number of other things that are very disturbing. I saw there was agreement signed, the gifted program, Equal Opportunity Review and Action Plan, and that was signed by Mr. Tompkins, and I think this is probably been ongoing before Mr. Tompkins was Superintendent of Schools, and I think that this has been festering for an awful long time. And I know that, I'm sure that Bobby James and Angie Boynton are probably very familiar with it, because they've been on the board the longest here. I'm very disturbed, the fact that you had to be a certain race to get tested, to be in the gifted program. And that the Rubics was set up, that unless you didn't have a score, you didn't make it into the gifted program. This was a very upsetting, and that is why we filed the complaint. And I see that we had acknowledgement that you had to be of a certain race to be tested, and I'm very disturbed. I sent it to your emails, I sent you the complaint, I sent you the copy of the resolution, and I hope that Marion County will someday become colorblind and realize that it is the numbers of, the giftedness is a number, it's not a color. And I hope that we soon will stop the discrimination that's been going on in this community for so long. And that's why, I believe Diana Green was on a name for the unitary status, and she was the communication person. She was also, her name was also on the individual when there were people who were given raises, that when they gave a particular, a particular witness for one-year principals, suddenly became, the wife got a promotion and a job slot. Her signatures are on those promotions. Very disturbed that we are this far along, and we are still having the white card being played in this community. I have this findings, and I'll be giving it to Joe Callahan. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, any more speakers?
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Catherine Larson, L-A-R-S-E-N. My current residence is 6978 Southeast Circle, Ocala, Florida, 34480. And I'm a straight A sophomore in the ACE program at Bellevue High School, and today I'm going to be discussing the change in the schedule at this school. We are going from seven periods to six periods, and a lot of the students aren't happy with this change. There are some benefits to this change. For some students, there will be less stress, and Bellevue will end up matching the schedules of the other schools in Marion County. However, students like myself will become even more stressed. In order to graduate from the ACE program, to get an ACE diploma, you need to take a certain amount of ACE classes and pass them. With this change, it'll be harder to do that, because you have less of a chance. There are other reasons why we should not go through this change. One, this takes away potential credits. Two, video production students in Bellevue have been leading the way in local, state, and national competitions. However, some students might not take it now, because they need academic courses instead. Three, because of this change, students are left with two electives. ACE students, however, have to take ACE global perspectives, which leaves us with only one choice. Four, some students dislike their core classes, and they only come to school because they like their electives. And without these electives, they are less encouraged to come, they're less likely to come to school. Five, teachers lose their planning period, so they would have to do more work at home, and they would have to grade more papers at home. Six, ACE students such as myself must choose between a class that they love and a class that would help them in the future. Seven, students must, students who like agriculture and want to take an agriculture course may not be able to, and without agriculture, the student cannot be in the FFA club. They have to be in an agriculture course. Next, these electives allow students to express their individuality and creativity while teaching them important skills for their future. Some students will be able to take a zero period before or after school, but this allows less time for sports clubs and clubs, which keep students, which could keep students from important life lessons and scholarships. Most ACE students expect to go to college, that's why they're in the ACE program. But without this extra class, a lot of students won't be able to take their, another language course, and most colleges prefer three languages. The Florida Virtual School doesn't, doesn't have all of the courses that these students would like to take, so it's especially Spanish III, and most students won't be able to get that third year Spanish or another language. Students will also lose potential free credits, and vocational programs will slowly decline due to their amount, the amount of students not being able to take the course anymore. Seven periods give students options and the experience to help them make decisions about their future. It gives them opportunity, it gives them flexibility and stability. Some students say that they chose Bellevue over other schools because of the seven-period schedule, and now it's being taken away. Personally, I really don't like this change, because I've been in band for five years, and I had to choose ACE sociology over it, because it's better for my future. The few students that came today also had to make tough decisions, and I hope you take this information into consideration. Thank you for your time.
First, I want to just thank you for coming and actually sharing with us your concerns. But I'm going to ask our superintendent to respond to you, okay?
Thank you, Catherine, for coming tonight. And I would like to recognize Catherine's mother, Connie, is in the audience, she is a member of our foundation. Thank you for coming in support of your daughter's questions and concerns tonight. There are a couple of things that are in the works right now. Board members, you also know, and Catherine, you'll have to indulge me and listen to me as I explain a little bit here, and the fact that we have funded our schools as to what we receive funding for from the state. We had overstaffed our high schools in recent years, enabling some of them to offer seven-period days, and we were very concerned about that, and not all of our schools did that. You know, we met with our principals and came up with a common schedule, some common issues, so we could have a unified approach to how we offer credits to students. And the result has been that we are going to be offering six-period day in different configurations, but a six-credit year, we'll say, and this is impacting some students. We are currently looking at the opportunity for, and Catherine mentioned this, a zero-period or a seventh-period, Mrs. Boston Ellis is currently running some numbers. We did offer this a few years ago, before we found out we could sneak in and do the seven-period day a number of years ago. So there are going to be some opportunities for this. I can't say, Catherine, that we're going to reach all of your goals, because, as you know and you're learning, there are tough decisions that students have to make. And we certainly want to applaud you for planning your future and working hard toward being an accepted student. being an exceptional student. I know for a fact that Mrs. Crisalka is meeting with Mr. Kelly to discuss this. That's your principal. She's also meeting with other principals, and as I mentioned, to, to the board, we are looking at other options to try to address some of your specific needs. So again, we thank you for, for coming here tonight, and you've been very brave, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board, Catherine just?
Stacy would like to ask a question about the schedule. I know it's been a long time since I had a high school kids, and we have the alternating day at Forest. I don't know what they taught, when you say seven-period, is it still an alternating-day type period, or is it seven periods a day? Like forty-five minute classes?
We have four classes per day. We have first period every day, and then we have odd and even days.
Okay.
So we have four classes per day.
That's why I changed my phrase. I said six-period, I changed to six-credit year. That's a better understanding. You could have six-credit year, you could run six periods, or you could run an alternating day, as long as a student has the opportunity to receive six total credits in a year. We have a variety of opportunities. Catherine's already mentioned, uh, virtual school opportunities. Doesn't meet everything, but there are virtual school opportunities, and actual estate has a virtual school requirement that state, that students must comply with. So we're, we're working with our students to, to get through these challenges that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for so much.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Zachary Holt?
My, my name is Zachary Holt. My current residence is seven-two-zero-two southeast county highway twenty-five A. My last name is spelled H-O-L-T. I'm actually here to address the same problem that Ms. Larson was, actually. As the superintendent just said, it is a funding problem. There is a funding problem where you can't just afford the seven periods, and you have to work with what you got. But what I've been hearing a lot of is, and this is no slander or anything along those lines, I've hear a lot of placing the blame on other people. Because I've been hearing from my teachers that it was Mr. Kelly. It was Mr. Kelly's decision. He decided that we should go to six periods because of the grades. Which, as you can tell, the grades for Bellevue High School actually have dropped dramatically since it's first been founded. Used to be an A school, it's kind of gotten down there, but they blamed it on Mr. Kelly. Then I'll have another teacher, and they say it's the school board's decision. And now we have the school board saying it's the state, but the state will say it's the government, the federal government. I think that if we can gain enough momentum on the lower levels, which I actually have been talking to all my teachers and all of my fellow students about this, which is, if we can gain enough momentum in the lower levels, we can gain more in the upper levels. If we can get the students and the teachers and all the faculty to agree that this is not a thing that we want, then we might be able to convince the board. And if we can convince the board, we might be able to convince the state, and we might be able to fix what we perceive as a problem. Zero periods are a good solution, I'll give you that. A lot of, a lot of my fellow students actually have zero periods, like Chef Nine's class, which is culinary arts. But, um, there has been discussion, and whether this is true or not, I do not know, but there has been discussion of zero periods, certain ones being taken away and others being implemented. That, zero periods can only offer so much, 'cause it is before school. I, for one, don't have the transportation to get to school beforehand to take a zero period. And I'm also an ace student, so I have to take my two years of, of secondary language class to graduate ace. That's actually one of our things, too, we have to have two years, which is why I'm in Spanish I currently. What, what I think needs to be done, I think it needs to be, as you guys are already doing right now, I think there needs to be discussion between all of the people involved. The students, the faculty, the board, and the state. There needs to be representatives from each, from each group to just discuss this. Because I don't think each group is seeing the other, the other group's perspective. They're seeing it as different problems and different solutions. One thing that I heard was, is that because our grades were so bad, they were like, hmm, we should just make it six periods and make it more focused on academic. I don't think it's the schedule that's our problem. The problem wasn't the schedule. We, as a school, have declined. I will admit this, I know it's true. It may be the faculty, it may be the students, it can be anybody, but I just know, this is not the solution. The schedule is not the problem. We need to find what the problem is, and I will admit there is a problem. But this is not the solution. We need to find something else. We need to collaborate. We need to find something else to do instead of change the schedule. Because I'm also an ace student, like I said, and I'm currently taking my business course. I'm a little unhappy with the courses provided at our school with, um, technology-wise, but I stayed there for the ace program, and because we do have, you know, good electives otherwise. I'm trying to switch out of Bellevue into, um, Marion County Technical Institute, I believe. I'm trying to switch to the other high school, because it offers better courses. And with changing the schedule, it's gonna, it's gonna reduce all my opportunities. I have two jobs, I have school, and I balance all this. And it's good opportunities, but when you take away the incentives that I have, like my electives, to, you know, broaden my horizon and give the students more opportunities, which is what school's for. School isn't, school's for education, but it's, as parents will always say, it's for getting the student ready for adult life. And if we don't have the opportunities that we need, then we won't develop like we need to. Honestly, I, I just believe that we need to discuss this, and we need to find a better solution, 'cause this is not, this is not what we need to do.
Mr. Holt, thank you. Ms. Stacy, and then who's next, Mr. James?
I just, I want to say thank you for coming. I am so proud of you. You're gonna be a, you're gonna be a leader. You're on your way. And I would like to ask Mr. Tomlin to please provide to the school board what the cost, the additional cost to this school is for having the seventh period, you know, versus zero, 'cause I know there will be a cost for the zero period also, but, um, I'd like to know the cost for, you know, how, what it would be for the zero period, and I'd like to know what the seventh-period cost is to the school system.
Essentially, I can share with you, it's one-seventh more teachers, is what it amounts to.
Okay, but if you add, um, the zero period, I don't know how many teachers that includes.
It would, the zero periods or seventh-period in that configuration generally serve for elective issues. I think it was Catherine mentioned, FFA, you have to take an ag course, TV production, Chef Nine's class was mentioned.
See, what I'm saying is, if we increase zero-period options, are we back up to one-seventh of the price again, not handling it during the school day, because some of the kids can't have transportation to get there?
I can share with you, there would not be as, as much if we offered just one period and gave supplements to teachers to do that. But I can get some costs for you, for, for a seven-period day for our high schools, absolutely.
I'd like, I'd like to get some costs, because, um, you know, many of us were educated under seventh-period days, I was. And, um, I sit here today, so I don't feel like it hurt me academically to have those kind of opportunities that a seventh-day period day does give you. And, um, so I appreciate so much you coming, and, um, I would like for you to contact me. You can go to the Marion County School Board website and click on, is it the district offices? District? And then it drops down, and there's, our school board members are there, all five of us are there. And I would like for you to please keep me updated on what's going on, okay?
If I may add one thing, I have agriculture first period, and I have, um, I have another friend of mine, they're an ace, but they want to be a veterinarian. You have to have the three years of that particular elective to become a veterinarian and go to that college. She can't do that and stay an ace. It's a blatant, it's blatant evidence that this is limiting their options.
So by adding ace, that's supposed to help you, we are hurting you in some ways, because it's not working out. If we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna add magnet programs, then we're gonna have to fund, we're gonna have to fund what it costs to have magnet programs. If the ace program is, um, is such a, you know, rigorous, um, requirement academically, then we either need to not offer it, or do it right.
I, if I may, I have a suggestion. We can't get rid of ace, 'cause that's one of the main things for Bellevue High School, because as I said, the grades have, their standing has dropped, and if...
But if we're gonna offer a magnet, we're gonna have to also keep the other programs in place for the other students also.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David Zio.
No, I'm just working along with what superintendent, uh, I just want to talk with superintendent. One of the things that I heard that you said today was more than anything else, that all of the high schools are, are working on a six-period day, is that correct?
Six-credit year, correct, sir.
Six-credit year.
Yes.
And it's, it's the configuration. So there's more to it than, than just one school.
That is correct, sir.
Because all the principals have worked together to try and come up with something.
That is correct, sir.
And how, how many high schools do have the ace program?
We have two schools that have ace.
North Marion?
At Bellevue.
Okay.
And we have two schools have the International Baccalaureate Program, and one school that has our own magnet program at Westport, and another, Forest has the E-Met program.
Okay, and, and quite a few of us, uh, there's other two schools have been using ace program on a six-period day.
I'm not sure what North Marion has right now. Mr. James, I don't know what their, their configuration is. I have not heard anything from Mr. Whitehouse in reference to this.
Okay, well, would you look at what everybody's doing, because I know, um, that's one of the key things, and, and what everybody is trying to get all the high schools on the same level.
Yes, sir.
And I know that they have been working in communications. The thing that I, uh, I'm concerned about is the communication with this young man, because he believed that Mr. Kelly's doing it for, for whatever reason, and he's just going there.
I...
Whatever the, the reason is, the communication, I just hope there's some dialogue between us two.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. James, um, that's kind of one of my points, is that we do need the communication, 'cause there was a lot of passing the blame. We need to know who's doing what and why. I honestly didn't come here today with knowing that it's, um, it's a cost issue. I had no idea of that, I just knew that you guys wanted to change it, and I knew why I believed that it was a bad idea. And I understand that it may have more cost to this county and to the state, but we have so much momentum in this country right now about helping our students and our education, and more funding to the schools and to the state. Why would we, why would we reduce the schools when we're trying to make it better? It's just, it's contradiction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt, and, um, can I, I just want to, just speak for one second, not, it'll just be a minute. And I just want to say that what we've seen today was conviction from these two students. They've come up, we had a student that tiered, and then you gentlemen, you came up, and as Mr. James stated, you discussed dialogue and communication, and that in itself is just, shows a lot of maturity on your part, and I think it's wonderful. And I think as a board, it's important that we pay attention to what you're saying, because these students are asking for more classes. I mean, that, to me, is amazing, that you are literally asking for more classes. And, um, I think as a board, we need to really listen and pay attention.
What grade are you in?
I'm currently a freshman.
Okay. You're, you're a great freshman.
Thank you.
Mr. Holt, I just want to say thank you for coming and addressing the board and bringing us your concerns. It's rarely that we do hear from students, but when we do, we're, we're all, we're all pleased, because it, it shares with us something about where you want to be. And, and I, I think, Mr. Superintendent, just hearing him ask that, maybe hearing from all the representatives, maybe at some point, I know we get with the principals and the teachers, and I know sometimes you get a group of students together, but consider these two students, because sometimes we, we need to bring different ones, so that we can hear the full side of, of the story, that represent our students, so would you consider that for us, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank, and thank you again, Mr. Holt.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your concerns.
And we will be, yeah, we will be looking for the information from the superintendent on this, okay?
All right, thank you. You have a nice day.
You too, sir. Okay. Before we go into our, uh, go down into our meeting, I'd like to, uh, recognize that we have a Boy Scout troop here today, and if you could stand up and, um, tell us who you are, and...
Uh, my name is Robert Reader. I'm, uh, teaching the course of Citizenship in the Community, and, uh, this is one of the fulfillments of that merit badge, is to attend a civic meeting of local politics or, or local administration, so...
And can you introduce your...
Uh, this is my son Connor. Uh, this is Austin. This is Jim Roberts, and this is Matthew.
And what troop, uh, do you represent?
Uh, troop one-twelve. We're out of, uh, Drew Hills Methodist Church on Seventeenth Street.
Okay, well, it is so nice to have you with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have an Eagle Scout?
No, we're working.
Okay.
We, we, he's close.
He's close, let's, let's, let's watch for that Eagle Scout. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board, may I have a motion to adopt the proposed boundary modifications to Dunellen Marion Oaks and Sunrise Elementary Schools, as well as to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks? I have a motion in a second, please?
It's still moving, second.
The motion's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion?
I have one...
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed boundary modifications will achieve better utilization of the affected school facilities, as well as expediency of transportation.
Okay. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the proposed boundary changes? Seeing no one here to address it, board, is there any discussion? We did have this at our work session. No discussion?
About one hundred and thirty students.
I'm sorry, you're heading...
I just wanted to say, um, we did, we talked about this a lot, so that the community knows. Mr. Burke did a great job working with us on it. I think we, we worked through almost every single house that was on the list. And, um, and so for the viewing audience, and for anyone that, you know, is involved by this, we put tremendous, tremendous work into that workshop. And, uh, Mr. Tony Burke, I thank you.
Thank you. A call of question?
Call a question.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
She's...
Okay, and the motion passes five-zero, and thank you, board, and thank you, Mr. Burke, for the, the work. Go then. All right, may I have a motion to adopt a new job classification description for the supervisor of payroll? I have a motion in a second, please.
It's still moving.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Um, Mr. Superintendent?
This new job classification description allows the hiring of a qualified supervisor of payroll to oversee training, reporting, review, oversight, and implementation of all policies and procedures as they relate to the payroll department.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this new job classification description? Seeing there's no one present, I bring it back to the board for discussion.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item C twenty-three, which has been placed on the regular agenda for a discussion? I have a motion in a second, please.
Submit. Second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. King. Any discussion? Call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following salary or wage schedules for fiscal year 2014 to 2015, to be retroactive to July 7th, 2014? One, confidential employees. Two, non-instructural management and support services. Three, administrative. Four, district specialized personnel. Five, miscellaneous supplements. Six, professional development presenters and participants. Seven, grants and special projects. Eight, community tech, technical and adult education and extended date. Nine, virtual school. Ten, adjunct dual enrollment. Eleven, temporary CSA and student worker. Twelve, temporary trades and services. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Uh, Mrs. Stacy, you withdrew this item?
Yes, I did.
Have any discussion?
The reason I withdrew this item is because I feel that we needed to have more discussion. Um, I'm cons, I'm particularly, and one of the things I'm concerned about are the supplements. Um, I feel that we have, um, many, many people in the district that are doing a lot of things that takes a lot of time, and they're making about a dollar ninety-eight an hour for their time, and, um, they're away from their families, and I feel that this should've come to us for more discussion on the amounts that we thought that, um, you know, we wanted to, we wanted to just discuss and get some ideas about it. I also probably would have said, if it came to discussion, let's look at the people under forty thousand dollars a year, and possibly see where they're at, um, instead of the, um, people on the higher end of the salary, and maybe done a little different juggling with the numbers for some of the people that are at the lower scale, on the, um, on those that are not recognized by bargaining units. But, um, you know, those were my feelings, and that's the reason I pulled it, and the reason that I don't believe I can support this.
All right, Mr. Superintendent, you have?
I can address a couple of things. Miss Stacy, do you know that the first issue that you brought up in reference to supplements, we've already assured you that we will be addressing that, however, that is a negotiated item, negotiated with, with the, uh, the union representing that particular goal, so that will be addressed, but it cannot be addressed by the Board like, like, like we are asking tonight. The second thing I would like to do i- is to share with you a document that I, I have shared with you, uh, prior to tonight. It is a summary of, of the different areas, and, uh, there, I've added two different areas at the very bottom that you can see, that are actually some totals down there, so you can look at over time. Do I have enough copies there? If you look across the top, you'll see that there, there are four different groups represented, MEA, MESP, IU PAT, and then Administration. You received the top eight lines or so of this. If you look in the very bottom line, if you look at a summary from 2006 to 2014, you can see what those, if you, I'm not gonna call them lower paid positions, but certainly those are MESP, IU PAT, possibly MEA would fall in some of that category. You can see over the course of the, of the last eight years, what we've done, six steps, five steps, four steps, and then for this last group, administrative, at two steps. So you can see the difference there. So we have addressed these other areas, I think, adequately. Uh, I'd certainly like to double everyone's paid, Miss Stacy, I think that that might be appropriate.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the MESP or the MEA, those we were already satisfied. I'm just talking about the people that were in this administrative, the secretaries and the different ones-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The unrepresented people, is what I was talking about, not the bargaining. And the only reason I wanted to speak about supplements was just, I just felt like we need to have some discussions about it, because if we don't discuss it hard, then it's not gonna get- I think that the people, the coaches and the people that are involved in this, I know where, I know why you misunderstood me, because I was talking about the coaches, but that was the only supplements that I was talking about. The everything else, the reason that I didn't approve it was because I didn't feel we went through the adminis, the non-represented, um, folks. I didn't feel like we really went through at a board meeting at a workshop clearly enough for me, and, but I'm, the only peo, and the supplements that I'm talking about, that was a whole different, that was something else, but the, I know that, that, that tonight, we're only voting on that last column. We're not voting on any of the other stuff we've already done at.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we have not done IU PAT yet.
Well, okay, okay.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, um-
Now, if you call the question, that's fine. I mean, that's just my opinion. I just feel like there's just disparity between-
We don't-
People at the lower levels and the upper levels.
We, we do, we don't, as you were aware, we don't discuss salary negotiations at work sessions or in a public forum. Those are done in shade sessions, and we did cover that in the shade session. That was an opportunity-
Very brief, mhm.
I understand, that was an opportunity for you, for you or any other Board member to, to address that issue at that time.
And we did, and it never came up again, so that's okay. I have a right to my opinion.
Thank you, Miss Stacy. Mr. James?
Okay, I, I understand what Miss Stacy is saying, but we did have an opportunity to do that. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I did speak with, uh, some people about this today as well. And I'm willing to go ahead with this, and providing that we know that I would like to bring this back next year, because this is one of the things that, uh, that I, I spoke with some people about today in reference to that.
All right, thank you, Mr. James.
So is there any more discussion, Board? Mrs. Ely, Mrs. King? All right, I call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Mr. Asia, I did talk with people about it, and I did make a special point of, of saying we need to bring this back up next year.
Thank you, Mr. James.
And the motion passes four one. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? One thousand dollars to Bellevue High School from David Molino. Twenty-five hundred dollars to community tech and adult education from Marion County Veterans Helping. Twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents to Dr. N X Jones, from Dr. N X Jones PTO?
Actually, it's just PO.
PO?
They have, yes, ma'am, they have a-
Okay.
Parent organization.
Okay, I was, I was curious about that.
They are chartered, they are chartered that way.
All right, thank you. Three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to Forest High School from Darcy Shaddix. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Fort McCoy School from their business partner, Adena Meat Products via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Ocala Rotary, Rotary Foundation, Inc. One thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Palmer Resources, LLC. One thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Whitfield M. Palmer Jr. Revocable Trust. Five thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute on behalf of the Donald Adam Family Foundation. Twenty-four thousand dollars to North Marion High School from Morgan Stanley on behalf of Cortez Allen. One thousand dollars to Saddlewood Elementary School from their business partner, Jenkins Auto Group via the Public Education Foundation. Fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to the Silver River Museum from the Felburn Foundation via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Silver River Mu- Museum from William and Etta Ross. Five thousand dollars to the Va- to Vanguard High School from the Board of County Commissioners. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Submit.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. King. Uh, is there any discussion? I call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And the motion passes five zero. This afternoon, I'm gonna ask you, Mrs. Ely, to, uh, thank our donors for-
Certainly, the total of the donations this, this board meeting's eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Marion County Schools. That's a lot of money. We appreciate so much the, um, the dedication that businesses and families have to, um, help support our schools. I believe I said this at last meeting, but the twenty-four thousand dollars to North Marion High, that's from a former football player who was, um, made it into the pros, Cortez Allen, and he's giving the twenty-four thousand dollars specifically so the football team can have new uniforms, and I'm, I'm so happy that he recognizes that and is able to give back to the community. So thank you so much to all of you for, for your donations.
Thank you, Miss Ely. All right, Board, a few, a few reminders here. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, April 23rd, 2015, at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to review the, is the annual review of the 2014-15 Health Insurance Program, and the strategic pa- plan, as well as receive the following updates: three-year technology plan, the impact fee, indexing calculation, and the long-range planning and school board member residence areas. Two special meetings will be held prior to the regular school board meeting on Tuesday, April 28th, for the purpose of refinancing existing debt to lower interest rates and save money. A special board meeting will be held at five p.m., and a special leasing corporation meeting will immediately follow. That's on April 28th, so please mark your calendars. And Board members, before we move on, um, I'll just ask for reports of any concerns, and I'll start with you, Miss Ely.
I have some very good news. Um, I attended the United Way Annual Meeting, saw Mr. Tom in there, Miss King, and, um, it was just so great to end that meeting in the morning, when we were all kind of asleep, and we had this gracious volunteer up there. He's seventy-three years old, never had kids, but he's a reading pal, and talked for a long time about the importance of being a reading pal and going into those kindergarten classes and making a difference with those kids, and we were all going, okay, okay, okay. Then at the end of his presentation, he gave a check for fifteen thousand dollars to the Reading Pal Program, so it's now fully funded for this next year. We didn't have quite enough money, but thank you so much, Thomas Lysinski. You're our reading pal. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Ely. Mrs. Stacy?
I do have something I wanna talk about tonight. You know, a year or so ago, I sent word out to the teachers and the people in the community to send me what I needed to know about what's happened in the schools. They had my phone number. I continued to get letters, I continued to get phone calls, and I received something from an anonymous school teacher. She's a school teacher here, and, um, I do know she was an elementary teacher. And she sent me something that I would like to talk about, because she said this is our public school system in her eyes. And it was a story about five monkeys in a cage. And the scientists were using the monkeys for an experiment, and they put five monkeys in a cage, and in the cage, they put a ladder, they went all the way up to the top, and they put bananas on the top. And the monkey, they put the five monkeys in, and one monkey ran all the way to the top, and he grabbed a banana. And the scientist threw ice cold water on the four monkeys in the bottom. And so the next day, monkeys went in, and that same monkey, because he didn't get cold water on him, because he was up high, he ran back up and got the banana again, and the scientist threw cold water on him, on all the monkeys again. The third day, when the monkey ran up, all the monkeys jumped on him and pulled him back down before they could throw cold water on. And so the monkey, the next day, didn't go up the ladder, because he didn't wanna get beat up again. So gradually, the scientists removed a monkey a day, with a fresh monkey that had never experienced any of this. Before long, all the original five monkeys were gone, and new monkeys were there. But because it had come gradually, every time the monkey, the new monkey would immediately go up to grab the banana, and he'd get beat up by the other monkeys, but there was no cold water being thrown on them, that's just what they did. So the monkeys had conditioned one another that if you go up the ladder, you get beat up, and so none of the monkeys would go up the ladder. So if the monkeys could talk, and you asked the monkeys, why did you beat up that monkey for going up the ladder? The monkeys would say, you know, we really don't know, but that's just kinda what everybody's doing. And so that leads me into what I'd like to say. That's education. Sometimes we don't know why we're doing things, but we just keep doing it the same way, but we don't even remember why. And an old friend of mine, Governor Jeb Bush, we communicate often, and he told me, over the last couple of years, he has said to me many times, Nancy, the school board has tremendous powers to choose curriculums. And he said, I endorsed you believing you would go do your job, and I believe you were elected to do that. So stop blaming Tallahassee for curriculum problems. So I would go fuss about it back to Jeb and argue and make my point about the different issues in Tallahassee, and all of a sudden, I now know I was becoming a monkey. I didn't know why I was doing it. I didn't know why I was saying it. Because we had someone here telling me that we had powers, but I wasn't listening. So I finally searched out the state constitution and state statute documentation, and I found I was exactly, that Jeb was exactly right. The school board has all the power on curriculum, and our school board attorney verified it recently for me, that I was exactly correct. I think it surprised a lot of people. And so this district here, it's not just now, it's been going on for years. Every time something's not going well, test scores are down, it's all Tallahassee's fault. But we have the power to change things here, if we would just use our power and stop being monkeys in a cage, and not even know why we're blaming other people and not doing our job. It is our fault that we are ranked fifty-sixth out of sixty-seven districts. It is not the parents, it is not the teachers, it is not the taxpayers, it is not the superintendent, it is the five school board members. The train jumped the track in Marion County a long, long, long time ago, and I've watched this district blame somebody else for all these years, when we were in complete control of curriculum and just didn't accept our responsibility. The train jumped the track, and it's been on a dirt road for many, many years. You know, I'm tired of our high school and middle school students missing electives, because they are sitting in reading remediation, thanks to the fact that this school board chose to use subpar reading curriculum in our K through third grade classrooms. I've asked over and over of our curriculum people, why don't we get something that works? And I've been told, Mrs. Stacy, we use what everyone else uses. Remember the monkeys in the cage again? Because no one really knows why everybody else is even using it anymore. So a year ago, I started looking at successful schools around the state, and by coincidence, I discovered that the average Montessori charter schools were far surpassing even other charter schools in reading, and even traditional schools in the reading test scores at third grade. I have spoken to our curriculum people many times about, over the last year, about, let's look, let's look into this Montessori curriculum. Let's look into doing some of this in our, in some of our traditional schools. Maybe do a pilot school. But we've not had a school board workshop, we've not, nothing's happened, but I have found five, possibly five charter Montessori schools, and two magnet schools, that are magnet schools down in Broward County. I have spoken to the administration at two of the magnet schools. One is called Atlantic Montessori in Pine Brook, and the other is in Fort Lauderdale, called the Virginia Schuman Young Montessori School. The Atlantic Montessori is five years old. It is a magnet school. It is not a charter school. It is a magnet school, it is five years old. It has seven hundred and seventy students. They get ninety percent of their students scoring three or above. They have been an A school since the day they opened their doors five years ago, and their students are chosen by lottery. There is no special permission. It is strictly chosen by lottery. And so there is a waiting list for the school. The other school is Virginia Schuman Young Montessori. It's thirteen years old. It has been an A school for thirteen years. Again, they have seven hundred and fifty students, and it is chosen by lottery. It is not chosen by anyone yet special anything. It's a lottery, a lottery, um, that's how you get in. In further investigation, I did find out the Montessori school is very expensive to get started, because teachers require special training and classroom setups are expensive. But how much is public school failure costing us in the prison system right here in Marion County? How much is failure costing us, considering businesses does not come here, because we are ranked fifty-sixth out of sixty-seven districts, and it's this school board's fault? I may not be an educator, but as a businesswoman, I can tell you that if one hundred percent of the Broward County's magnet Montessori schools are A schools, and have been since the day they opened their doors, and fifty percent of our schools are D's and S's- that we cannot afford not to look at that concept. We cannot afford to not look at it. I also found that one of the administrators at the Virginia Schuman Montessori School, which is a magnet school, has now taken a position at a non-Montessori school that was in academic trouble in Broward County. And she is having success because she took her Montessori alphabet to the new school, and she's working with the K-three students there, and test scores have improved just by implementing the Strong Phonics program. There is also another school, Martin Luther Elementary in Broward County, that is an F school, and now Montessori staff has moved there. So, the Broward County District knows that the Montessori program is making a difference academically for these students. So, who is Maria Montessori? She was the first female medical doctor to graduate medical school in Italy. She specialized in pediatrics and psychiatry. Her first job was in a psychiatric hospital in Rome where she worked with children and found she could make great progress with those children. In nineteen oh seven, Dr. Montessori moved to working with poor children in the dirty, desolate streets of a slum area in Rome. The news of her unprecedented success soon spread because these were children that were considered to be uneducable. And she had tremendous, tremendous success, so much so that in nineteen fifteen, she was invited to the United States by Alexander Graham Bell and Thomas Edison and others. They brought her to speak at Carnegie Hall. They asked her to set up a classroom for four months so her classroom of twenty-one children could be watched from behind a glass wall. That year, in the United States, two gold medals were awarded in education, and Dr. Montessori received them both. She returns to Italy now, and she continues her work after nineteen oh seven. And word came to her that Mussolini wanted to nationalize the Montessori curriculum. And we know what happens when the government starts nationalizing something. She knew it then it would be a disaster. She was having no part of Mussolini taking her curriculum and nationalizing it because it was so effective the way it was. She didn't need the government to help her. She was a very, very anti-fascist person. She fled to India where she continued her work in education and pediatrics and was twice nominated for the Nobel Peace Prize. Some of the people in this room would be familiar with people who were Montessori educated. Steve Jobs, founder of Apple. Founder and CEO of Amazon, Mr. Bezos. Both of the founders of Google, Brendan Page, were both Montessori educated. Julia Childs and Frank. Will Wright, who was a major video game founder in the United States, and Jimmy Wales, who founded the online Wikipedia. Alexander Graham Bell helped create the first Montessori school in Canada, and Thomas Edison founded one of the first Montessori schools in the United States. I'm asking for some time, Mrs. Boynton, at a workshop to consider a pilot program in Marion County sooner than later because our students get one chance at an education, and today it is yesterday for those who will not be passing their FSA exam this month. Also, I have been following legislation regarding reading remediation, and so far, not a lot is happening on that front. Therefore, I have been in touch with the Department of Education's Lori Lee and the DOE's Just Read Department, and I have discussed options beyond pulling middle and high school students out of electives for reading remediation. I asked her why we could not develop our own virtual program for our students. And the reason I went here was because I had an administrator in the district talk to me and share with me the need for this. And that's the reason I went on to the Department of Education to talk to them about it. And I said, "Can we, to keep from pulling them out, some of these students could do things on their own time. They could do reading remediation. Their parents could work with them. Just because they're not doing well in reading doesn't mean that their parents isn't willing to work with some of them if they wanted to do it in the afternoon after school." She shared with me that state statute and state board rule is clear, and she sent me, I have it with me tonight, that we can implement reading remediation however we want to implement it. And she said, "Virtual would be fine." I then asked her for districts' names that are doing their own virtual programs so that their vocational education programs can be saved in the high school because we're losing vocational education because we don't have students sitting in there because they're sitting in reading remediation. She said, "Oh, Mrs. Stacy, no one is doing it that way." Remember the monkeys in the cage? Because we don't really know why we're doing reading remediation the way we are. We do have some other ways we can do it, but we just keep doing it the same way, and it's killing our high school students. So, after that, I contacted Florida Virtual. They're a public school to see if they could handle this for us. And was told by Deanne Watson, a director there, that they're starting to think like me, or I'm starting to think like them. They will be offering an online reading remediation for students to take in August because of this very problem that so many students were being pulled out of their classes. So, there will be some options for students in August through the virtual. They are catching on, I guess, at Florida Virtual, that we don't have to keep doing things the same way the other monkeys are doing it. Regarding the music curriculum, been working on that. Given the fact I have now proven to this board that curriculum is no one's responsibility per state statute, except the responsibility of us five, I would like this board to set a precedent in Marion County, and let's lead as we're supposed to lead. Saying that, if you will recall, I requested letters to come to my house again and got some more information from the music people. I'm getting my phone calls still. They come to me thanks to that old letter that went into the newspaper two years ago. That was told I should contact Hillsborough County and see what they're doing. I did. I spoke to the head of that department. She was busy. I spoke to her secretary, and I said, "How are y'all addressing music?" And she said, "Oh, we determined a certain number of minutes each student should get." I've been talking about minutes, that, you know, not just give a school two music teachers or one music. Just decide how many minutes each student should be able to get. And in Hillsborough County, each student, first through fifth grade, gets sixty minutes. And the kindergarten students, they kind of work in what they feel they can work with them. But the first through fifth, every student gets sixty minutes of music each week. So, that way, if we set guidelines, then the parents, no matter what school they go to in the district, they will know exactly how much music their child will be getting if they go to Ward Highlands or South Ocala. And so, you know, I want to continue our discussions on that. So, Mrs. Boynton, I have lots of curriculum questions that I'd like to work through, and I'd like us to please address some of this in a workshop. And I will continue getting information on the Montessori school. They're actually, down in Broward County, the superintendent, apparently, because it is so expensive to set up a Montessori school, they are now taking the K-through-two reading program that Montessori uses and having teachers trained. Staff development requires staff development to train the teachers. And they're implementing just that piece of the reading because they're having so much success with students learning to read using the Montessori program. So, even Berry College right now, and there's another college in South Florida that is actually even offering now school teachers, they're graduating school teachers with a certificate in Montessori. So, I just wanted to share all of these things. It's a lot of things that's happening and just share it all at one time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. And Mr. Superintendent, Brenda, is there a way we can look at our workshop agenda and come up with a date so that we can look at Montessori, reading, a pilot program, you know, see if it's something that the board can come to a consensus on or not? I think the music issue that you discussed, I think we kind of went over that with our minutes thing.
Yeah, but we never got two minutes. We never isolated the two minutes.
But we can bring that back for discussion so that we can discuss that. But if you could also provide some of the literature, some of the things that you...
...or something too.
Right. If you could provide it to Brenda, the gift of the board members, as well as to the superintendent, that will give us a head start so we can do some reading on that.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it. Also, the information that you got on the music also.
Okay.
Okay? And Brenda, if you could give us a date, you know?
Let me work on that. Our next few work sessions are crowded.
Crowded, right. Right, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Superintendent. And thank you, Mrs. Stacy and Mrs. King.
Okay. I really don't have a lot of discussion tonight, other than I just want to thank our teachers and our principals for working so hard during this frustrating year. And as a board member, I appreciate that, and I would also like to encourage our students to stay focused. You're almost there, and we understand it's been tough. So, if you can just stay focused and push strong till June, hopefully, we're not going to be number fifty-six. We're going to prevail. I just feel it.
Thank you for that, Mrs. King. I'll finish today.
Just some things that came out tonight. Bill HB seven zero six nine, I want to make sure that, I would like to encourage the superintendent to make sure we get that information out to our parents. Kevin, if you could, because I'm getting a lot of calls from parents that are concerned about, especially about the third grade component and the variations of some of the things that may be occurring with that bill. And I know our parents out there are really interested in what is occurring. And I agree with them wholeheartedly. With Chris, wholeheartedly, one of the things that we have to do is communicate what we are seeing and what we can do as a collective group to get some changes in this, and this is important to me. Another thing I would like, just to remind people that were listening at our board meeting tonight and listen at the students that have concerns about what is occurring at our schools in terms of the ACE program. And we've heard some more things like the Montessori program and things like this. This takes a lot of effort because one of the key things that was said tonight is our school district and especially our high schools were working together to try and get a uniform look in terms of what they were trying to do. I know that you heard a lot of things about the Montessori schools, the music and all of that. I have no problem with being creative, and I know when you say we were one of the monkeys in the cage, you know, I'm sitting here saying, relax. All I know is good ideas come by, and we just need to take time to investigate these ideas and investigate them and make sure it's something that we can use in our cage. And that's one of the key things that I'm going to say. Because I know there was a lot said tonight, and it don't appear that we might not be doing something. But I do know that I've sat in on some of our magnet evaluations, especially with Oak Crest and all the rest of those programs that we've had in there, and the people did really a good job in terms of trying to move us to another direction. That's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton. A couple of things. Earlier, Mrs. Boynton mentioned about reminders for meetings, and I want to make one correction to what Mrs. Boynton mentioned, and she read it correctly. I made a mistake on there that we would be looking at our strategic plan on April twenty-third, and we're not going to do that since we've got so much else to do that. We're going to be scheduling that in May. So, we'll get that actual date to you in the future. Just another couple of issues. One, a legislative report. It's been mentioned several times tonight that House Bill seven zero six nine has passed, both House and Senate, and the governor did sign that this morning. This is the assessment and accountability legislation has already been mentioned. It's a very, very lengthy bill. It deals with promotion, retention, remediation assessments, and independent review of the Florida state assessments. And many people are reviewing what this legislation is talking about now. I spoke with Mrs. Stewart. I do have her personal number. You know, we're friends. We talked this morning, and her legal counsel, not just one person, but her legal counsel at DOE is reviewing this and looking at all the implications of this and interpreting that. So, we don't know exactly what it means right now, at least in all of it. DOE will be providing us with guidance and directives regarding this legislation. As soon as we know definitive things, we will be advertising that to our public, just as Mr. James has said is so vitally important. There is one issue in this bill that needs very little interpretation, if no interpretation whatsoever, and that is the legislature and now the governor have given us the opportunity to start school earlier than we had legislative requirements. And I have mentioned to you in at least two or three public forums before that I would like to start school early because it is good for students to start earlier. And I am going to be recommending to you, as an emergency item in the very near future, that we change our fifteen, sixteen school year calendar to start the student year on August the seventeenth. It's August seventeenth. That's a five-day or actually a one-week earlier start date for students. And we think that is good. That'll put us very close to completing the first semester. We can actually finish the coursework before the holiday break. And we'll be advertising that as soon as we can, if we can't get it on as a regular agenda item. That will be coming to you. I don't have a draft for you tonight. We're working through our drafting issues. Mr. Burke's office, our guidance and testing office, our principals are looking at that with us. Again, our focus is going to do what's best for kids regardless of how this works out. We've talked a lot about recruiting good teachers for Marion County. And again, I want to thank you for approving our staffing plan so our principals can go ahead and get busy. You know that we have reinstituted a job fair here in Marion County, and our school district is going to be hosting that on the evening of May fifteenth and May sixteenth, and we're looking forward to having a lot of outside people come here. We also, our Employment Services Department has a recruitment webpage on their webpage. So, if you're interested in visiting that, we hope that that will advertise what a great school system Marion County is and what a great place Ocala, Marion County is to live. Mrs. Bundrick has already sent out a note to all of our schools asking for information regarding end of the school year, events that you might like to attend. Judy Evans at the front desk is going to be placing all those items on the district calendar. So, I would ask that you either contact her or frequent the district calendar because there may be various events that you would like to attend. And then, I know that some of you have already selected your high school graduation locations if you have not done so. If you would please see Mrs. Chulley about that, and we'll make sure that we have proper board representation at all of our graduations. Then, the final thing I'd like to share with you is that, you know, for a number of years, and I do not know how long this goes back, many students at Dunellen High School actually came to Dunellen High School from the Levy County area, specifically the communities of Yankee Town and Ingles. Levy County has actually transported those students to Dunellen High School. They attend Yankee Town School from kindergarten through eighth grade, then they come, if they want to, to Dunellen High School. If they choose not to, they go to other Levy County schools, Williston, Cedar Key, or Chieflin. And even some of those students, as I understand, in Dunellen area might even go southward towards Sisfris County. The school administration in Levy County has made the decision that they will no longer transport the Levy County students that wish to come to Dunellen High School. They will permit any student that we accept from the Dunellen area who will provide their own transportation to Dunellen High School. We offered to actually take one of our buses, actually drive into Levy County to go to Yankee Town in Ingles. And I spoke to Mr. Hastings this afternoon, and he would prefer that we not do that. He does not want our buses going into Levy County to pick up his students, so to speak. However, he does understand there needs to be some sort of concession for the current ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students who might need transportation to Dunellen High School, and he will work with us on that. And I just wanted to share that with you, that we've had a longstanding relationship with Levy County, that community. Ingles and Yankee Town has traditionally sent their students to Dunellen High School, and Mr. Hastings and I will be working on what's best for those students. That's all I have, ma'am.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent. You took some of the things I wanted to talk about, but that's okay. Mr. Lake, you have anything for us today?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know we're running along here and don't want to take up too much time. Again, I'd like to say that I really enjoyed working with Barbara Dobbins, our ESE director, on some challenging ESE in Section five oh four and ADA issues in several of our schools last week. So, we've been busy traveling around. And I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Dobbins on putting together some training in Section five oh four and ADA for the staffs and in the schools. And we're also continuing to do contracts training for the different groups. And I think the next group up will be the Grants and Federal Programs group where we go over the ins and outs of putting together contracts. So, looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, Brenda, do you have anything for us?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board, before we move on here, the superintendent talked about the graduation assignments. I'm just reminding you gently again. And then, I don't know if you read your email, but there was an email from Lisa Yang to Mark Rialnello regarding some changes in the student code of conduct. And I'm going to, she brought up some very good points, some very good points. So, I would like to have the superintendent, I'll forward the email to you if you haven't gotten it.
I'll give it to you. You can forward it to me.
Yes. Both of you. And what I would like to do so that we can kind of research into it is to put that on the agenda for the next year for Code of Student Conduct, our planning period, and even invite this particular parent to be on that committee. I think it would be...
I think it would be, um, something worthy, um, to have a parent sit on, on our, our board that has an interest, you know, and that has some suggestions, some very positive suggestions. So I would like for Mr. Villanello to, to consider that for us, please.
Can't we still add things? We can still add stuff to this year, we haven't closed it out yet, if it's something for this year, I understood.
You can amend it. At this first, I seem, I'd rather let Mr. Villanello look at it, Mr. Lake.
I'm not gonna turn it
No, not me right now, I mean, but we still have time.
You can, we do print the document, and we also have it electronically, but, but we, yes, it's, it's not in stone now, it cannot be amended, it can be changed.
Right, I wanted to, the reason I wanted, I wanted the, the committee to have this discussion on it, as well as principal input and dean input, on, on what their procedure, procedures are already, and, you know, what type of wording it should actually say, you know? Also, um, I just mentioned that in our next work session, we'll be talking about the impact on P. And I was telling you at one of our meetings that I went to Orlando, and here's some of the studies from several counties on their impact fees. So I'm just gonna pass it out to you, and you can look at that information, uh, at your convenience. Okay? And, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome, and moving on. Before addressing expulsion matters, I would wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March twentieth, two thousand and fifteen. Are there any parents in the audience who would wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Okay, board, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD fifteen dash seventy, JD fifteen dash seventy-one, JD fifteen dash seventy-two, JD fifteen dash seventy-three, JD fifteen dash seventy-seven E, JD fifteen dash seventy-eight, dash E, and JD fifteen dash fifty-nine with educational services through the first semester of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. May I have a motion, a second, please?
Send it.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James, is there any discussion? And when I call a question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Brenda?
My computer is down.
Okay. Aye. Okay. And the motion passes five zero. There be no, excuse me. One more. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD fifteen dash seventy-four, JD fifteen dash seventy-five, JD fifteen dash seventy-six, JD fifteen dash seventy-nine, JD fifteen dash eighty, JD fifteen dash eighty-one, JD fifteen dash eighty-two, JD fifteen dash eighty-three, JD fifteen dash eighty-four, JD fifteen dash eighty-five, JD fifteen dash eighty-six, JD fifteen dash eighty-seven, and JD fifteen dash eighty-eight, dash E, with educational services through the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Send it.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James, any discussion? Call a question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. There be no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the meeting is adjourned at?
Seven twenty-four.
Seven twenty-four.